Good evening. Thank you to all the candidates for joining us for Part One of the Fargo School Board Candidate Forums hosted by the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. My name is Katie Rutter. I am currently serving on the League's Board of Directors. I will be your moderator for the forum this evening. This forum is being streamed live and also recorded for playback on the City of Fargo's government PEG-TV channel, TV Fargo 56. This recording will also be posted to our Facebook page. Due to the large number of school board candidates we have, we've had to split this group into two sections, so please stick around for the second section coming up at 7:15. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. If you want to learn more about the League, please visit our website or find us on Facebook. We want to thank the City of Fargo for providing the space and the technical assistance for this evening's event, and a big thank you to all of our volunteers who have showed up to help us out tonight. We couldn't host these forums without your help. We also want to take the chance to highlight our voter guide, vote411.org, where you can find your polling location and compare candidates who will be on your ballot. This guide will be published on May 5th. We would like to thank Folkways for sponsoring our guide this year. Finally, we'd like to dedicate this candidate forum to a longtime member of our League, Frank Krackey, who passed away this last week. He was the first gentleman to be elected to our Board of Directors, and he was always one to jump in to moderate our candidate forums. We want to thank his wife Patty for also being a steadfast member. Note that Frank was treasured and will be missed greatly by our League. So, before we begin, I'd like to review the rules and procedures. The questions have been submitted in advance by the public, online, and also here tonight. Questions may have been screened for clarity or combined with other similar questions. All candidates will be given an opportunity to address each of the questions. Each candidate will have one minute for their opening remarks. Each will then be allowed one minute to respond to each question. At the conclusion of the Q&amp;A period, candidates will be given another minute for their closing remarks. A timer will indicate how much time is remaining and indicate when your time is done. When you hear the buzzer, that means that your time has expired. Please complete your sentence or thought so that we can move on to the next candidate or question. We appreciate the audience's consideration in maintaining a quiet room so that all candidates have the opportunity to answer their questions fully and in a timely manner. So, now we'll begin our opening statements with Ms. Melissa Berkland.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. My name is Melissa Berkland. I work as an attorney. I graduated from Fargo South High, and I currently have two children attending the Fargo Public Schools. I come from a family of educators. My mother was a longtime principal in the Fargo Public Schools, and education was extremely important to my family growing up. My reason for running for the school board is very simple. I love Fargo Public Schools, and I want to be an advocate for its teachers, students, and staff. My skills as an attorney will help me listen to complex and competing information, analyze dense data, and make difficult decisions that will enhance our school's strengths and support areas that need to improve. I am a natural collaborator, and I will use my strong communication and problem-solving skills to serve the school board and to serve our entire Fargo Public Schools community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greg Clark? You may begin.
My name is Greg Clark. I'm a Sanford data analyst and a teacher's husband with a background in education policy. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this important event, and I'd like to thank the audience, both here and online, for caring enough to spend what's going to be three hours watching this. With my opening statement, I'd simply like to offer up a piece of information that I believe should be in the back of all of our minds throughout this event and in the coming months. According to a January 2022 national survey, 55% of educators say they're considering retiring or just plain leaving their profession. I can tell you one thing for sure: nothing that any of us will say for the rest of this event will matter if half of our educators disappear.
Thank you. Mr. Zach Ikola?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Zach. I'm a software engineer. I work for the state of Minnesota. I am also a labor leader and a community organizer. I'm running because I believe we need a full-throated defense of our public institutions. I'm frustrated, as a parent and as a worker, that we have spent the last two years of the pandemic embroiled in controversies that have done quite a bit of damage to our faith in those public institutions. Working families face real problems this year. For example, the USDA waiver ends, which will affect plenty of working families. We need to get focused on real issues, and that's why I'm running today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rebecca Knudsen?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca Knudsen. Education of our children is most critical to our community. With voters electing me to serve two terms on the Fargo Board of Education, I have the experience necessary to move initiatives forward with a balanced approach. First elected in 2014 and re-elected in 2018, I have led the Fargo Board of Education as its president through an unprecedented and challenging time. I have supported decisions that kept our students, teachers, and staff safe and our schools open. I work to provide sensible, fiscally responsible leadership for the needs of our students, teachers, staff, parents, and the community while taking into consideration viewpoints that might not necessarily be my own. Under my leadership, the board hired the district's current superintendent. The alternative high school received a new name, Dakota High School. The Explorer Academy opened, and the 2021-23 teacher contract was agreed upon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brian Nelson?
Yeah, hi. I have 34 years of public education experience. Eight years, the first eight years was a sixth-grade teacher, fifth-grade teacher, and an elementary principal. The last 26 years have been a school superintendent at various districts. My wife and I, we have 10 children. We just have one left at the house. He will be a senior next year. We're excited about that. He goes to Fargo Davies. We have nine grandchildren with three on the way. My wife, Ellen, works at Sanford in the Cancer Research Center. She's continuing her education to be a nurse practitioner, mental health, and psychiatric. I am also on the Town and Country Credit Union Board, so I get the chance and opportunity to work with monies and things like that. My reason for running is simply I was elected in 2018, like the things we were doing, and want to continue to do more things for kids.
Thank you. Mr. David Paulson?
Hi. My name is David Paulson. I am currently finishing my second term on the Fargo School Board. I'd like to thank you all for inviting us here and coming to listen to us. I've got Brian beaten two categories so far. I have 35 years in education. In fact, if I started at the age of six, there's been a whole lot of decades where I've been involved in education, and it's where I want to be. I personally have 10 grandchildren, and I am hoping to get out of here by 10:00 to 7:00 so I can go to a program for three of them tonight. Education is, there's absolutely nothing in your life that you spend money on that's more important than education. And I have tried to show through the last eight years that education is a priority, and listening to the people who elected me and the patrons of our district is my number-one objective and will always continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alexis Scott?
Hello. I'm Alexis Scott. I am a mother of four, and I'm running for Fargo School Board. Personally, I have spent the last few years advocating for our teachers and our parents. Professionally, I am a workforce development consultant, a former bilingual case manager and mental health advocate, working with high-risk youth. I'm also a steering committee member of the Chambers Professionals of Color. Families are tired. Teachers are burnt out. Our proficiency rates in math and reading have declined steadily over the last five years, with multicultural students actually seeing the worst results. We've not leveraged our community partnerships to their fullest potential, nor are we making all the objective decision-making we can at both the administrative and a school board level. I believe that my candidacy is strategically focused, results-driven, and also has a solution-based mindset. With that, I'm looking to provide a quality education experience for all children.
Thank you. Ms. Kristin Charbonneau?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kristin Charbonneau. I'm a mom of five, including children with special needs, and a licensed mental health professional. Mental health is a predominant concern for a number of the candidates. Not only is mental health my passion, it is my career. I have been an advocate for mental health and addressing special needs for years. The first time I addressed the school board was in 2018 to voice concern about money being spent on a building instead of using the money to provide teachers and staff with the resources needed to maintain children in their neighborhood schools and address the increasing needs of students with behavioral challenges. I've been actively involved in legislation around mental health services in our state, and professionally, I have worked with teachers and families to collaborate to meet the needs of individual students while having realistic expectations of teachers. A large piece of mental health is providing a sense of belonging. Creating a sense of belonging requires a community effort. Thank you.
Thank you. For the first question tonight, we'll start with Greg, the next in line. So, "A shortage of schoolteachers is a national concern, one that also affects Fargo. How would you propose the district retain current Fargo teachers and recruit new qualified educators?"
So, I think, first of all, it's a financial issue. We absolutely need to increase the pay for our educators. We can and should compete with Morehead. There's no reason their educators should get paid more than us. But as far as recruiting new talent, I'd like to see Fargo start a so-called Grow Your Own initiative. These programs, used in districts throughout the country, assist local candidates in becoming certified educators, and they focus on candidates who reflect underrepresented groups in the community. I think it's a really elegant solution that serves two purposes. First, easing staff shortages, and also by increasing diversity of our staff, we can really help bridge the gap for our students of color who do not get to see as many educators that reflect their own diversity.
Thank you. Zach?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. You know, the shortage of teachers is part of a larger employment shortage across the country. I wish the answer was as simple as pay people more. You'd think that, me being a socialist openly up here, I would say that, but as a union steward, I know that that's not always the answer. Issues with turnover in schools or turnovers in any workplace are often not necessarily economically related. They're issues of frustration, not being heard, not being involved in any decision-making processes. And then also, just like we've been under a whole lot of stress for the last few years that has been exacerbated, including by people up here today, have been a part of that exacerbation of problems. So I think the answer is to start by listening to teachers, and not just say you're listening to teachers, but actually bring teachers into the room and give them a voice at the table about what they need.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. As we all know, there are entities all across the nation that have shortages of workers. Schools cannot shut down and take time off. We can't close down Monday or Tuesday because we don't have staff. And so, we need to utilize some very creative approaches to help us here. Financing actually is going to be an answer, I feel like, to a lot of the questions that might come our way this evening. Everything that we do, ultimately, even when we get, of course, into talking about a negotiated contract, deals with financing of the school district and the monies that comes our way. And so, in retaining and in recruiting, we do have to have adequate finances. That does require property taxes. That does require financing from the legislature, and we need to be more active in ensuring that that financing comes our way. We also need to spend time listening to our staff and learning.
Thank you, Brian.
So, as a candidate of the school board and currently on the school board, we worry about this all the time. I also, at my day job, get to worry about it and wrestle in South Dakota, where I'm the school superintendent there, and Fairmont, North Dakota, where I'm school superintendent, about hiring teachers. We've had a lot of turnover just this year, last year, people retiring and such. And one of the things that we're doing right now is we're reaching out to the Filipino base. As a matter of fact, they had four interviews last night, and I believe currently we're hiring, we're hired three of them. And so, we're working through that process. That's new for us. We're examining that. Paying teachers more is something that we've been saying that for years. It's not been something that's just came about. Maybe we could get the retired teachers to come back and give us maybe some halftime time. Maybe that's a possibility, so.
Thank you, David.
This is a tremendous problem, and as it was pointed out by Greg, it's going to get worse. We have a lot of teachers now who are leaving the district after less than five years, and that's just when those people are really starting to show their value. We have to show teachers, number one, that they're respected and appreciated. It's very, very simple to say that if we double their salary, we'd solve our problems. I don't think that's necessarily, would necessarily be the truth. There's a lot of teachers out there that feel that they're working their heads off, and nobody seems to care. That's administrators and parents. We have to show our teachers that they're respected and valued and absolutely necessary for the education of our kids. We're not currently doing that. We have to give teachers a stronger voice, and as was mentioned earlier, it's not enough just to let them talk. We better start listening as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis?
Yeah, so, this is a multifaceted issue, one of them being that equitable pay initiatives. And what I mean by that is that not just increasing pay, but analyzing the true role and duties of each teacher. We recognize that teachers are not up here anymore just teaching. They are also mentoring. They're a therapist. They are controlling behaviors. One of the largest themes that I've heard from my conversations with teachers is support within the classrooms, getting resources in there that help them with the behaviors and the other situations that they're running into that's taking away their time and their abilities to actually teach. Furthermore, I was one of the only candidates up here that also pushed the school board for the raise in subpay. It is not a small, it's a small action, but something that we need to start doing to start creating a better culture that's been seen as more of a hierarchy and not a servant leadership approach. So it's changing our mindset too about how we're approaching things, how we're engaging teachers, and providing them some psychological safety to engage with us and feel heard and represented.
Thank you. Kristin?
I do think that finances and pay is a piece of this, but that's only the tip of the iceberg. Our teachers need to feel supported and listened to. This year, there have been several grievances that have been brought up all the way through to the board that have not been addressed by the administration, in my opinion, appropriately. And it's our job as school board members to hold administration accountable and make sure that they're providing the support that teachers are requesting. I also think that there needs to be an emphasis on relationships, because we all feel better when we feel connected with other people, and we allow teachers the time to connect with each other and their students. That would also decrease behavioral problems, which is part of the problem currently.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thank you. So this is a long-term, complex problem that's going to take a lot of different approaches, but I think it starts and ends with listening to our teachers. And I think when you can show that you're listening to your teachers, when there's things that are reflected in a contract with them. I think the best way to show that somebody is valued is to give them a salary that's competitive with anywhere they could go. I also think that those contract terms that aren't necessarily monetary, but reflected in how much time do you have for preparing, how much time is protected, are you compensated for recess duties? I think all of that can show that we value teachers and that we are supporting them. And I also think it's going to take a lot of communication with teachers in our district to make sure that those needs are being met. I also think that this is so long-term that it's going to take partnering with universities and making sure we have a pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach, we'll start with you for the next question. If elected, how will you ensure that parent input is heard and reflected in the decision-making process of the board?
Yeah, I think it's important that parents are heard in all facets of what parent civics means, I guess. I think we often get too focused on parent problems, taxpayer problems, worker problems. I'm all of those things, and they all interrelate with each other. So I think it's important that the school board does a very good job of communicating issues, particularly on temporary or more permanent boundary changes. Taxing issues, we need to be upfront with everybody about what the economics situation is within the school district. We have a cap in how much money we can spend, and we have continually rising costs. So that creates a structural problem that needs to be communicated in ways that can help come up with creative solutions.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Sure. First, I'd like to start out by talking about and referencing the Communications Engagement and Advocacy Committee that is one of the standing committees of the board. And that is a committee that really is needing to be growing in terms of the service that it provides, especially, I would say, in regard to the engagement and advocacy end of things. And so, if we talk about trying to involve parents in decision-making and feedback, I would invite, I would focus on that committee and work on seeing some efforts that we might be able to come up with that would then be working for the entire board. I would look further into our liaison assignments and see where we can expand there, possibly looking at some listening sessions. The board meetings are fine and great, but those are really meetings of the board to do their business. The public is allowed to come and speak, but not required. And it's really, that really doesn't provide an opportunity for the engagement that's needed. The board members have the opportunity to listen, but not engage at that time.
Thank you, Brian.
So, a lot of times, when parents reach out to board members, they have complaints or whatever they might have, a lot of times, they're starting at the wrong place. If they've got a complaint about something, they could, about a teacher per se, rather than going to the board member, you go to the complaint of where it started, and you try to fix it there, and you move up down the line, up the chain. Rebecca said, "What about the communication, advocacy, and engagement?" I agree with her. I was, one thing I was going to say is, that committee is developed. I started with that committee in 1819, my first year on the board, and we changed the name, I believe, so that we could let the public know what we're doing and get it out there. And it helps if the news can get out the correct information as well, so that the parents know what's going on.
Thank you. David?
I think one of the problems is that school boards, as well as a lot of local government, never get much attention until there's a hot button or a big issue. And then, our emails light up and we get hundreds a week. I think that people need to be engaged on a daily and weekly basis with their schools, as was said earlier. You should be going to lunch with your students. You should be talking to their parents. You should be going to meetings with the principal. As a teacher, we had parent-teacher conferences every year, and in the elementary, every single parent would show up for those conferences. By the time they got to me in eighth grade, I was lucky if I saw 35 or 40% of the parents. And unfortunately, most of those were A and B students. They weren't the ones that I had a real critical need to speak to parents with.
Thank you, Alexis.
Yeah, something I would like to see more of is some more task forces and groups that are connected together to discuss certain issues and topics. The reason that these are effective is because you set these up to invite anyone who wants to join them. Then you break them up into smaller groups with a facilitator that engages with them. You keep the groups consistent to build relationships and understanding, and then you develop outcomes and results, and basically, what are you going to do with that information that you're gathering? And you keep consistency and opportunity to engage in those task forces. Fargo Public Schools has a historic practice of accepting certain people into certain committees or groups and then closing those doors, and we don't move forward. As a candidate, I would like to see board members offering up an opportunity to connect with parents at their designated schools as a liaison to get that parent feedback. We can't say that we're not engaging with people if we're not trying. I'd also like to see things developed into other languages. We realize that there's language barriers for multiple families, and it's essential for them to engage with us in the way they're most comfortable.
Thank you. Kristin?
One thing that is currently being done is the State of Schools address. I have attended that multiple times, and I have greatly enjoyed that, and I would like to see more of that. Again, like Alexis was saying, those are opportunities where parents can come and be broke out into smaller groups, and discussions can happen. I also think that being present at schools where you are the liaison is very important so that parents feel like you are committed to being a part of the process and want to hear their feedback. There's things that can be done that don't cost a lot of money, such as sending out emails to ask questions if there are things that are happening and get parent feedback, and improvements with a website to make it a little bit more user-friendly and have more information available.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thanks. So I think parent input really helps the entire Fargo Public Schools community, and when we have engaged parents, that can really help support our students. One thing that I think could be strengthened is the liaison program that the school board has, and have each board member and their liaison school have really regular, consistent meetings that are meaningful. I think then, students at that school and parents at that school will feel like they have a board representative that understands, you know, challenges that would be unique to that school district and that school system that might not otherwise be heard. And it's a good form for the school board member to bring those concerns to the entire board and think about ways that they can, you know, possibly address any parental concerns and also have really meaningful input that way.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, I'm a really big fan of soliciting input from all different sources. I'm one to freely admit that I do not know everything, and together, we, you know, as a community, will get the job done if everyone chips in and there's an open and active line of communication available to everyone. And I think it's one thing to say, you know, as a school board member, here's my email address on the website, send me an email whenever you want. I think it has to go beyond that, and the first thing is acknowledging that we need public input on different ideas, and I very much welcome that.
Thank you. A number of questions we've received concerned public health measures during the pandemic, especially mask mandates. What is your stance on the school district following public health mandates? Rebecca, we'll begin with you.
Well, as I said, I made decisions since the beginning of the pandemic to support the safe and healthy work environments and learning environments for our students. I had a basis of following the guidance of public health, and I did not change my stance on that. There was a time where we reconsidered if we needed to continue masking, and I stuck with my decision. I was confident in relying on the experts, the scientists, and the health professionals to provide me with that guidance, and we did that in an effective way. Students were able to be in school, in person, and with no large breaks that we needed to take to interrupt education. So I am very proud of the decision that the board made, and I am confident in my process to make that decision.
Thank you. Brian?
And I would agree with what Rebecca just said. When we first started... When we first started this pandemic, nobody knew anything. This was all new to us, and it was scary. You didn't know what was going to happen, if you were going to live or die or what. And we had to develop a plan, and we did. And like Rebecca said, none of us knew, we weren't the experts, and so we developed this plan relying on Cass County Public Health. The other thing that's tied to this that I want to mention is, is all of our funding, like S R one, two, and three, all of those three pots of money were, you had to have a plan in place in order to receive those dollars to help us through the pandemic. And so that was a great thing that we had, that those, the plan in place so that we could receive those dollars.
Thank you. David?
I did not support Fargo-Cass Public Health when the board decided to follow their directives. And I did it for two reasons. Number one, I thought that this was something where parents should be allowed to make a choice rather than the administration, rather than the administration of Fargo-Cass Public Health. Number two was the fact that we had a larger district than us just to our west who did not mandate masks, and their numbers were no different than ours. I think that it's showing now, you're hearing even the Center for Disease Control say many of the things that we were doing really weren't effective. Cloth masks, for instance, did virtually nothing to prevent, prevent the spread of the virus. And we frankly, we overreacted and we antagonized a tremendous number of our patrons by taking and doing something that they thought was a medical decision and taking it out of their hands.
Thank you. Alexis?
Yeah, I think that is ineffective and unattractive to function in absolutes. What the Fargo School Board did is we functioned in absolute of going with an always for following these directives. The concern with that is that there's always an exception. A fantastic exception of this is English language learners who are trying to learn a language and don't have a choice about the way that they can learn something. And I don't know if you've ever all learned another language, but learning a language with a mask on your face and a teacher's mask on their face can be very difficult. And I don't think that the school board really was in touch with those considerations when they made those decisions. We have plenty of special needs children, other children that had to function in these environments that might not have been conducive to their learning needs. Finally, I trust parents. I trust parents that they make the medical decisions they need to make for their children. As a heart patient who's received multiple open-heart surgeries myself, I'm a high-risk person, I take my medical decision-making very seriously, but ultimately, it's always between my provider and myself. And I believe that that's the way that it should be maintained. The school district has no business mandating medical decisions for families. That's always up to them.
Thank you. Kristin?
I support parents making decisions, especially medical decisions. I, I am pretty sure that if we had a way to enforce that children slept eight to 10 hours a night, every night, that their achievement scores would go up, but that is just not appropriate. That is not our right to do that. Another piece of that is I will never ask anybody to do something that I'm not willing to do myself. One of my major frustrations was that we had board members repeatedly voting to keep masks on children in schools, and they were out in public without masks on themselves. And that is unacceptable, in my opinion.
Thank you. Melissa?
Sure, thank you. I was very grateful as a parent with two kids in the Fargo Public Schools that the school board continually listened to public health experts and Cass County Public Health. My husband is a pediatrician and he treats immunosuppressed patients, and so we were always very concerned about the spread of the virus. And vaccination and masking, we now know, is one of the very best ways that we can keep the most vulnerable members of our community safe. I think that was of utmost concern. I think there's times when it's really important and critical to have parent input, but I also think there's times when it's really important and critical that we listen to experts and people who have gone to school for over eight years that really truly understand how diseases are spread, how our immune systems work. I would rather be taking their lead when we're making decisions that can affect our entire community versus parents.
Thank you. Greg?
I'm a data analytics professional at Sanford Health. I got to see our community's COVID numbers in real time, as well as our hospital capacity. It'll probably come as no surprise to anyone that I'm a firm believer in the science and I follow the health directives and guidance that our scientific community recommends.
Thank you. Zach?
Yeah, I think the framing of this question is, is as medical autonomy versus public health is a completely false dichotomy. What, what's actually happening here is a group of selfish people and a group of people who want to ensure the health of our entire community. You know, as, as a working parent, like, so as of today, it's been two years and one week that I have been working from my kitchen table. I'm frustrated as a parent. My whole life was thrown into turmoil with a child upstairs trying to figure out her math homework while I was trying to do my day job. The answer to that frustration isn't to get super shouty at school board meetings and, and then create a situation where we're only listening to the loudest parents. Like I said, I'm a working parent. I didn't have time for any of that stuff. So this dichotomy of, well, it's about medical rights, it's about medical rights, that's absolute BS.
Thank you. We also received a number of questions submitted online and in person about diversity, equity, and inclusion, also known as D E I, especially as they relate to LGBTQ plus students. Are there D E I initiatives, if any, that you would support in Fargo Public Schools? Brian, we'll begin with you.
We, we have a diverse population in our, in our schools. And lots of different languages spoken. I forget the amount of, how many there are. All kids are included, all kids have the right to learn. Public Law 94142 states, you know, ages three to 21, all kids have a free and appropriate education. And so I support, you know, all of our kids in, in terms of getting an education, whether that be a career or technical education, alternative school, what have you.
Thank you. David?
Fargo Public Schools is in the, has the job of educating students. And there's a period at the end of that sentence. We educate students of any color, any race, any, any student that comes through the door is going to be given the best possible education that we can provide. I am not personally aware of anything that is done within the Fargo Public Schools that prevents any group of students from not receiving an education. That's, I mean, that's the plain and simple truth of it.
Thank you. Alexis?
Yeah, as someone that functions at a community level for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and is a diversity, equity, and inclusion trainer in our community, it's essential for us to get to know other cultures in a very positive way, especially as an introduction to other cultures. My concern as a parent is the way that some of our books have been framing certain cultures because when we read and understand information about either a fiction or nonfiction book that is in the library or can be accessed by students, and we don't have a thoughtful conversation about what, what this might look like in a family, or we don't have those conversations about how we can be mindful of respecting other cultures and thoughtfully getting to know people, we put ourselves in these boxes to be separated out. So in order to make D E I more of a functional part of the classroom, we need to make sure that we are always focused with an empowering mindset in the way that we're approaching other cultures and students.
Thank you. Kristin?
I think it's very important for everybody to be learning about other cultures and from other people's experiences. A big piece of this, I think, is acceptance, and that comes on the mental health side of teaching our students how to accept themselves and how to be proud of who they are and to support them in that journey. Another piece that is missing is there is a lot of controversy about a lot of topics these days, and students aren't really being taught how to have conversations and ask those questions to learn about things that's more of like, I don't agree with you, and so you can't be my friend, and the conversation's completely shut down. So I feel like the, the school has a responsibility to open up those dialogues and to encourage students to be learning about other cultures.
Thank you. Melissa?
Sure, thank you. Yes, I am fully supportive of any diversity and equity and inclusion programs that make sure that all of our students are learning in the very best atmosphere they can. I think there was an LGBTQ component to the question, if I heard it correctly. I think one thing I want to point out is that when we recognize and accept transgender individuals and LGBTQ community, we lower the suicide rate substantially for those student groups. And I think keeping that in mind and framing that to make sure that we're always making choices that make those groups feel good would be really important for me. In my own workforce, one thing that we did start doing was normalizing the use of pronouns to make sure that everybody feels like it's okay to share what pronouns you identify with. And if there's initiatives in the Fargo Public Schools, I know that's worked very well in the Department of Justice, and I would support small things like that, that show that you're accepted.
Thank you. Greg?
I'll have to slightly disagree with David over there. He said nothing prevents a student from receiving an education, and I would say, sure, nothing's preventing a student from walking into the classroom, but I would ask, are they getting the same equitable environment that they require? Research shows that young people benefit from seeing people like themselves in important roles. And in Fargo, well over 90% of our educators are white, and about 30% of our students are not. I think one thing we can do to support our diverse student population is to attract and retain more educators of color. And as a side note, research shows that teacher turnover is, greatly impairs student learning. So that's why I'm so focused on educate, retaining educators.
Thank you. Zach?
So first of all, I agree with everything Melissa and Greg said. So thanks for saving me some time. But following the George Floyd murder, there was a group of students who pushed really hard with the administration to start releasing data on student groups in, in terms of disciplinary policies, that sort of stuff. I think, I think that, that really motivated the administration at the time to start looking into D E I programs and training. I would like to see that continued and expanded. I know that, I think right now principals are being trained. I would like that to be all the way down to the individual educator level.
Thank you. Rebecca?
We do have 80-plus languages in the Fargo school system. We are responsible for educating every student that enters our doors. And it is imperative that students see themselves, that all students see themselves within the curriculum that is offered, and that they see themselves represented with our staff, whether that's a teacher, a custodian, a librarian. We know that the success of those students will rise if they see people that are in leadership positions that look like them. And I want to let you know my pronouns are she, her, and hers. It's very important that we open up a dialogue and that we offer an opportunity for students to be addressed and acknowledged by how they want to be, how they feel comfortable within our school system, so that they can be in a situation where they provide, get the best education that they need.
Thank you. David, we'll be starting with you for the next question. The teaching of critical race theory has become a top, in schools has become a topic of national discussion. How do you think Fargo Public Schools should address this topic?
That's very interesting. It's a, it's a topic that we have not addressed. We do not currently teach critical race theory. I honestly, I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, thank you. Alexis?
Yeah, so Dr. Gandhi actually spoke on this at a school board meeting recently, that North Dakota actually outlawed the teaching of CRT in the schools and classrooms. So I believe that we have a stance from Fargo Public Schools on aligning with that law. With that, though, as a multicultural person, I've always been very empowered by my bilingual abilities, by my multicultural upbringing, being indigenous and also Jewish. I also find that the best way that we can lift up students of color is to embrace that through empowerment. A big concern of mine as a citizen in the CRT is the disempowering focus that CRT can have. It disempowers us as a minority culture to believe that because of the way that these systems are set up, we are going to be ineffective and unsuccessful. I will be the first one to say that if that was the case, why would I be sitting up here as a minority female, talking with you all today? I believe that the way that I've broken barriers is by telling them no, showing up and taking up space.
Thank you. Kristin?
I don't think that CRT has a place in school. My major concern with it is the basic premise is that in order for a person to get ahead, somebody else has to be squashed down. And I think that we are all at our best when we are working together and we are helping each other.
Thank you. Melissa?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to answer the question as though the North Dakota Legislature did not pass the bill this past year. I, I think it's really important to learn about our country's history and learn about it in a way that makes us kind of understand where different groups and different minority populations have come from and what their struggles are. I, wasn't until I was in law school that I learned about how kind of the fabric of our communities was really determined. Before the Fair Housing Act was passed, it was legal to discriminate against people based on the color of their skin. A bank could refuse to lend a home to somebody, a realtor could steer somebody into a certain neighborhood. So our, our communities and the advantages that certain people have is not by accident, and I think it's important that we recognize that. I don't think it's about squashing down some groups and exalting other groups. I think it's about making sure that we understand that we didn't all start at the same starting line.
Thank you. Greg?
I'd just like to echo that someone pointed out that this is a non-issue. It's not taught in Fargo. It's, as of November 2021, was outlawed in the state of North Dakota. So if you have issue with that, you can speak to Governor Burgum about trying to overturn that. With my remaining time, I would also like to point out that I think engaging in these culture war topics is a distraction from the real issues that the school board can and should be focused on.
Thank you. Zach?
Yeah, I agree with that last statement 100%. Critical race theory, as David said, is not taught in schools. It's not taught in any elementary schools in America because it's a college-level legal theory that has been used primarily because it has three scary words in it, critical race theory. It's been used to create a moral panic, which has been tied to the defund schools movement. One important aspect of that ban on critical race theory from the legislature was it was also, there were also bills introduced that would defund local schools by those, by the same group of people who are pushing the critical race moral panic in, in these schools. It's no different than kitty litter in schools, which is an insane topic that somehow we end up talking about. But the reason for that is it's entirely a distraction. It's meant to make us talk about that instead of the budget.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Critical race theory is not something that is taught within the Fargo school system. It wasn't even before the bill was passed in the legislature. It's a college-level course to discuss. And I believe that it is being discussed in our community and across the nation to help steer us away, or with the intention to steer us away from the work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am extremely disturbed by the attempt to sway us off our mark. It is extremely important for us to be acknowledging the fact that not everyone starts in the same place in society. At, students do not all arrive in our public school system at the same spot. I have had the opportunity to serve on the Native American Commission- I have had the opportunity to serve on the Native American Commission as a liaison from the Fargo School Board, and that has been a time of eye-opening for me to learn that I, as a white person, started at a higher level than many others.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I'm not going to re-say things that have been said, but I'm pretty sure in our social studies curriculum and Fargo Public Schools, we're teaching a lot about different people and groups of people throughout our curriculum, from way down into kindergarten all the way through seniors, to learn where people are, where they started, what wars were what, just a lot of different things. I think students are learning a lot about people and where they came from and ancestors and et cetera, so I'll stop there.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with you, Alexis. What is your position on directing public tax dollars to private schools or charter schools, either through vouchers or other means?
Yeah, I personally don't have a lot of experience in the process of aligning funds to other places. I believe that we need to strategically look at the way that we're spending our dollars. Outside of charter schools and private schools, I find that we spend a lot per pupil right now. We're actually spending a lot compared to statewide averages. So if I had to make some considerations about where I would focus our funding, it would be, are we putting the dollars into the classrooms to get the teachers the support they have? As far as charter schools and private schools go, I believe that that funding is typically private or that those grants are going to be received generally from other places within the state legislature that's providing that funding. I don't know of any charter schools that exist currently in Fargo, and the private schools currently themselves are also self-funded or funded directly from other dollars and not taxpayers, so that would be a new practice, and I wouldn't have enough information to know the logistics.
Thank you. Kristen?
I don't have any comment on how the current funding's going. I don't see any problems with that, but I also haven't looked into that real deeply. But I do think that there are things that the public schools can be doing to work in collaboration with private schools and parents and families that are homeschooling, things like extracurricular activities. They don't necessarily cost the school district more money, and I personally believe that the school district belongs to our community, all of them, whether, no matter where they're going to school, and that we should be reaching out and working to include all people of student age in activities at Fargo Public Schools.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thanks. So my personal philosophy is to try to keep public tax dollars within public schools. I think the best way to ensure an equitable community is to make sure that the free education in your community is the very best education that can be provided. So I always like to see public money stay in public schools, particularly, I guess, for example, if we're going to be concerned about achievement, a lot of the S R dollars are directly tied to incentives to make sure that we minimize achievement gaps. And I think we should be making sure that those public monies stay within our public schools if we want to be concerned about our public school achievement gaps.
Thank you. Greg?
Put simply, I think public funds should be directed exclusively to public education. There's a bill in the North Dakota Legislature right now gaining traction, passed one chamber of Congress, to give parents $2,000 as a tax credit if they send their kid to a private school. That is the opposite of using public funds for public education. I think that is a travesty. I spent years of my life studying this exact topic while working on my master's degree, and I have quite a bit to say that I can't say in 10 seconds. So if anyone would like a thorough explanation of my opinion, please find me later. I'd be very happy to discuss this.
Thank you. Zach?
Vouchers are a form of segregation. That is, vouchers are just a fancy word for segregation. What would happen is that if I got $2,000 as a software engineer, I'm middle-class, maybe upper-middle-class. I get to decide, all right, I'm going to take that $2,000, I'm going to add it to money that I already have, and I'm going to go to a private school. The family that I grew up in, I grew up in a trailer court in Dilworth, they wouldn't have had that option. They would have had to go take that $2,000 and go to the $2,000 school. That right there is a divergence in the concept of universal public education. What we would do is we would create a class system that would also be very tied to race as well, because there are clear correlations between race and class in this country. So I would fight tooth and nail against any voucher system.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Public dollars are intended to be used for the public school system. I would not support, I do not support a voucher system. Charter schools are not allowed in North Dakota by state statute. There are extracurricular activities where students that attend parochial or private schools are able to participate in the Fargo school system. Sports is one example, where there are cooperatives that are offered for students to be involved. So again, public dollars are intended for use in the public school system when we're talking about schools. We do not have a high level of dollars that we spend on our per-pupil funding. We need to have that level increased so that we can provide greater opportunities for the students in our school system, opportunities that our community has said they want our students to receive and support our teachers and staff at a higher level.
Thank you. Brian?
So currently, we are, our budgets are balanced. We're not deficit spending, we're not overspending, we're not to the good. We're about even. I don't support the vouchers because I don't want public education to be destroyed. Currently, we get about 62% of our funding from the state, 30% from local taxes. And if we start giving all these breaks to people who own property because they go to a private school, then that just takes more money away from us, and then everybody else who's paying taxes in the public schools will have to raise more money through us, the public. And then the state gets off, or will get less from the state. So, and what we don't want is, we don't want, some kids aren't going to be educated because not everybody can afford a private education.
Thank you. David?
The state of North Dakota provides for the education of all of our students up to the age of 21 in a free, public K-12 education program. That's paid for by our tax dollars. If you choose to send your kids to a private school, I'm all for it. I have friends whose kids are in the private schools. I have teachers who I've known for a long, long time who are part of the private school system. They're going to get a great education, but I will not, I will not support using my tax dollars to support their private education.
Thank you. Kristen, we'll start with you for the next question. Do you support no-cost breakfast and lunch for all students enrolled in a North Dakota public school?
I'm trying to think if there's any negatives to that. I guess I don't have a problem with that. Sure.
Thank you. Melissa?
Sure, I think provided that there's room in the budget or that we're getting that federally funded, I think that's a great way to normalize getting free lunch at school, and that is something that I would support. And it's also, I think, important to note that I believe that the free lunches are an opt-in program, and I think that could also help make it more accepted to get food from school if somebody had some sort of stigma. So I would be definitely for reducing stigma as well.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, a hungry student is a distracted student, right? That doesn't just apply to children, that applies to all of us for our entire life. If I'm hungry, I'm not going to be able to pay attention. And being able to provide free meals, I think, is something that is absolutely a great idea that, as someone mentioned earlier, is something that is actually in jeopardy. And I think we need to make sure that we put in the time and effort to ensure that we can expand that program as much as we can, when we can, because universal free meals are going to be going away unless we act now.
Thank you. Zach?
I grew up on the Free and Reduce Lunch Program. So yeah, I believe in a universal program for lunch. However, like I said earlier, the USDA waiver on free hot lunch expires this summer, which doesn't just mean that parents are going to have to start paying for lunch again, right? I mean, we're already getting squeezed everywhere else. What's school lunch, right? It also means higher workloads for administrators. My parents weren't necessarily people who like just jumped at the program, right? It's a self-reported program. A lot of people are very prideful. So it requires the district to spend a lot of energy going out and finding parents of students who can be a part of that program. It's just an immense amount of overhead for something that we should pay for, and specifically the state legislature I think should pay.
Thank you. Rebecca?
When I was in grade school, I received lunch because I had a different colored ticket than many of the other students that were in the cafeteria. We don't have that system in place now in terms of identifying who has the need and who doesn't. But I do understand that there are students that are in that same situation that my family was in. Certainly, I think it would be wonderful to provide every student with, I think the question was about breakfast and lunch. The question is where the money comes from. And that is something, so philosophically, certainly, I'd love to support it. I'd love to be able to have a conversation and look at the budget and see what can be done. What we need to realize is that anyone that serves on the Board of Education is responsible for looking at a budget that helps finance the fourth-largest employer in the city of Fargo. 80% of our revenue comes from state funding. About 80% of our expenses is human capital. So it's a conversation and a decision-making process for priorities.
Thank you. Brian?
So growing up in the early 80s, my mother and father were the cook and custodian at Stanley High School, and we did qualify for Free and Reduce, and we had the different colored tickets. Because they used to, my friends would say, why do you have that color? And to this day, I don't know what it was. But I do support the Free Hot Lunch Program. I wish it could happen again, and I'm surprised it's not with the Democratic Congress and presidency. I'm shocked that it didn't happen again. But I think more, we've really got to start focusing in on is, we're struggling to get workers to work in that industry. And we really got to, that's an area, you know, we talked about paying teachers, we have to start paying those people as well, more. And also, getting the food is a problem, and I know it because I work in two school districts and I talk to cooks daily.
Thank you. David?
I had a long conversation in the grocery store with the principal at Bennett Elementary. She told me one day last week, 85% of their students came in for breakfast. And I don't think that that has anything to do with the fact that it was free. I think it had to do with the fact that they were hungry. As Greg said earlier, you can't educate a person who's worried when they're going to get fed again. I think that from the COVID money that we received, one of the greatest things that happened was the fact that we've been able to give free breakfasts and dinners to all of our students. And I really would like to see that continue. The unfortunate thing, as Rebecca pointed out, is the fact that it has to be paid for. We need our legislature to step up and do a better job. They have, this has been on my mind for a long time, we have a legacy fund that has billions of dollars just sitting there, waiting for a rainy day. It's pouring outside.
Thank you. Alexis?
Yeah, I believe from a philosophical point of view as well, I could fully support that. I had a great conversation with the Director of Food Services last year in an interview for Fargo Moms Blog, and was able to post a little bit more about the cafeteria experience. A few things that she noted was that behaviors were lower. A community-style breakfast and lunch was engaging more students. Students didn't have to choose between going to have breakfast or playing outside with their friends, because now they were having it in the classroom. I also am a huge supporter of my children's teachers, sending extra snacks to school for kids that don't have one. I believe that this is a community effort. I also realize, too, that we have those budget constraints in the way that we can allot the money towards these programs. So from my perspective, it's if we can't get the money from the government, are there private partners that are willing to partner with us? Some considerations, though, too, are supply chain issues and highly competitive schools like the LA School District. That the Director of Food Services noted is that those are schools that are going to get things and supplies first. We are at the low end of the totem pole.
Thank you. This concludes the question and answer portion of the forum. Thank you to all of our candidates for participating. For the audience at home, if you'd like to continue learning more about your candidates, please visit vote411.org to help you learn more about North Dakota candidates' positions on important issues. Again, that is set to publish on Thursday, May 5. And don't forget to vote in the primary election coming June 14. This is when the local races, including the school board race, will be decided. So I'll begin closing remarks with a prompt that we've received from a voter. In a deep field of so many candidates running for school board, so many, we have two sections this evening, why should Fargoans give you their vote? Melissa, we'll begin with you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks again for hosting this. So I firmly believe that nothing can be more important or more transformative in a child's life than an excellent public education. And a well-supported and educated child will benefit the entire community, whether you send your kid to school, to Fargo Public Schools or not. The district is going to face a number of challenges in the years to come, and my experiences as an attorney will be an asset to the board. A good school board member must be proficient at gathering and analyzing complex policies and data, and my skill set will serve the Fargo Public Schools community well. I will listen and consider diverse viewpoints within our school system, prioritize students' and teachers' needs, and make decisions that may not serve me personally but would be in the best interests of the Fargo Public Schools community. So this is why I am asking for your vote on June 14 for the Fargo Public School Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
On June 14, you'll get to vote for up to five school board members. And as you can see, you have a lot of options. But if you want someone who believes in the transformative power of a great public education, who believes our educators deserve better and that our students deserve better, if you want someone who believes an investment in our schools is an investment for a better Fargo, for all of Fargo, my name's Greg Clark, and that makes me your candidate for school board.
Thank you. Zach?
Thank you. First of all, thank you all for the opportunity tonight. I appreciate having a few minutes to chat with the public. I would like you to consider the fact that our schools are, the working environment of our teachers is where our students learn. As a union leader, I'm the vice president of my union local. I'm on my statewide organizing council in Minnesota. I understand how to get things done for workers within my own government systems that I work in. So yes, please, please consider voting for me because I'm a working dad and I understand what working parents are going through right now.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Thank you. I work to continue to provide fiscally responsible leadership for the school district. I have experience of eight years. I am studied on the policies and the procedures of the board and understand the relationship of the working between the board and administration. I am a sensible leader. I work with people with a variety of viewpoints. I have been elected by the voters twice. I have twice been elected by my fellow board members to serve as the president. Very honored to do so and very honored to be here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Well, having served 34 years in public education, one of the things I'm considered really good at is the finance piece of it. I understand how the money's coming and out. And it's been a great learning experience at Fargo Public Schools. We have an excellent cabinet and superintendent that has been a great working relationship the last four years. They do a really good job of working hard for kids and trying to get them to the job, following our policies that we set as school board. There's three goals that I thought that I could see coming up, like in an alternative school, we got to try and update that particular facility. We've got career and technical education that needs to be looked at. We need to find time outside of direct instruction to support our teachers. We also need to worry about our mental health of staff and students. Those are the major ones. And I guess last, but not least, I'm very unlucky and get my name drawn on the hat. So I will be last on the ballot. My name never got drawn out, so I am last on the ballot.
Thank you. David?
Thank you for the invitation to be here. I've spent the last eight years on this Fargo School Board, trying to serve with integrity and open-mindedness, and I intend to continue that if I'm elected. I want to give a stronger voice to parents, to the students, and to the staff. I want our schools to be respected and appreciated. And I want that, we're going to have to do that by earning that respect. And I hope that I can be a part of that for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis?
Yeah, Alexis Scott, I want to thank everyone again for hosting us here today to have this conversation. I want to say that I lead with strategy, empathy, and authenticity. What you get from me is what you get. So I have a diverse working background and professional background that allows me to be dynamic in the conversations that I have, and embrace diverse thoughts and beliefs. With that, every single candidate, and parent, and stakeholder, and taxpayer is welcome at my table for discussion. Based on some of the responses that I've heard, and the things that I've read about other candidates, I can't say that I would necessarily be welcome at theirs. So with that said, I hope to earn your vote on June 14. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin?
Hello, Kristin, thank you. Kristin Charbonneau. As we've heard today, a lot of concern is focused around mental health. I am the only licensed mental health professional that is running for school board, and so that is definitely a huge asset that I bring to the table. Along with that comes skills in working with people in collaboration and identifying common goals. And I am a hard worker and just dedicated to do the best for all of our students at Fargo Public Schools. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. That concludes our first forum for the evening. Thank you all for coming, and please stick around for the second section of school board candidates to follow.
All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome. Good evening. Thank you for joining us for, this is part two of the Fargo Public Schools Candidate Forum, being hosted by the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. My name is Ashley Ladbury-Hircheney, and I am currently the board president of the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. And I'll be moderating this portion of the forum. The forum is also being streamed live, and is being recorded for playback on a number of different channels. It will be seen on the City of Fargo's government PEG TV channel, which is Fargo TV 56. The recording will also be posted on the League's Facebook page, the City of Fargo's Facebook page, and the City of Fargo also posted on their website. So there will be lots of opportunities to view the recordings afterwards as well. Due to the large number of school board candidates, we did have to split the school board candidates into two groups. So hopefully, everybody was able to see group one earlier this evening. If not, it is available for viewing online. So this is group number two. Just a little bit of information about the League of Women Voters. The League is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. If you'd like to learn more about the League, please visit our website or Facebook page. We also want to thank the City of Fargo for providing space and the technical assistance this evening. And a big thank you to all of our volunteers who showed up this evening. We couldn't host the forums without you, truly. We also do want to highlight quick our voter guide, which is vote411.org. You'll be able to use vote411.org in both North Dakota and Minnesota. And it's a place where you can find your polling location, compare candidates who will be on your ballot. The guide for the primary election will be published on May 5. We'd also like to thank our sponsor, one of our sponsors this year, which is Folkways, for sponsoring the guide this year. And lastly, we would also like to dedicate this candidate forum to our longtime member of the League of Women Voters, Frank Crackie, who passed away last week. Frank was the first male elected to the Board of Directors of the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley. And he was always one to jump in and moderate a candidate's forum. We also want to thank his wife, Patty, who is a steadfast member of the League and very involved. We know Frank was treasured and will be missed by our League. So before we begin, I just want to review the rules and procedures. Questions have been submitted by the public, both online and in person here tonight. The questions are screened for clarity, and then often combined with other similar questions, so that we get, you know, multiple questions asked about the same topic kind of get combined into one. All candidates will be given the opportunity to answer each question. Each candidate will be given one minute for opening remarks, which will start over here on this end with Katie Christensen. And we will hear the time buzz when time is out at the end. And then, at the conclusion of the Q and A period, candidates will be given another minute, sorry, and then we will do one-minute responses for each question, with each candidate taking a turn answering first for the questions. And then at the end of the Q and A period, we'll have one-minute closing remarks. Candidates, when you hear the buzzer, it means your time is expired. Please complete your sentence or thought, so that we can move on to the next question of candidate. We also appreciate the audience's consideration, maintaining a quiet room tonight, so that all candidates have the opportunity to answer their questions fully and in a timely manner. So we will begin, Katie Christensen, with your opening remarks.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Katie Christensen. My pronouns are she/her, and I'd like to begin by thanking the Women Voters for hosting this event. I am seeking a seat on the Fargo Board of Education, because I believe in our public schools. Our schools play a vital role in our society, and I believe that all children have a right to this education. If elected, I bring experience to the board as a former middle school and high school Spanish teacher, plus I worked as a substitute teacher while in college. I also have a master's degree in human development, so I can bring expertise and understanding how the environment impacts child and youth development. I'm seeking this seat because in recent years I've been concerned with how public school systems are being treated. I'm concerned about censorship. I'm concerned about public school funding being diverted to other entities. And I'm worried about piling tasks on teachers' plates that have no connection to student achievement, and seem to contribute to teacher burnout. Thank you.
Thank you. Namal?
My name is Namal Day. I just want to say thank you so much to the League of Women Voter. When I was six years old, my entire world collapsed. My society was at war with itself. Many of the dull in my life harmeded me in terrible way. The only reason I'm alive today and here before you today is because my aunt took action. In our moment of crisis, we left Sudan for America. The children of Fargo Public School are seeing similar situation on a smaller scale. In person, schools stopped, something that was literally unthinkable a few years ago. One hundred and forty-one teachers and staff has resigned. Our children are watching as their world is clapping. Their teacher, their mentor, are leaving to protect themselves for the poor management of the district. This is a crisis, just like my aunt saved me. Fargo needs a school board member that will treat the current situation as a crisis and take action. That is why I'm running. My name is Namal Day. It is time for Brand New Day.
Thank you. And Katie Kelch?
I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters as well for holding this forum tonight. My name is Katie Kelch, and I am a Realtor in Fargo-Moorhead. I have lived in Fargo for almost 20 years. As a Realtor, one of the first questions somebody coming into the community asks are, how are the schools? And I'm always proud to tell them that we have an excellent public school system. Right now, I have two school-aged children who both attend Carl Ben Eilson, and one will be attending South High next year. Recently, my parents moved here from Southern California, and we brought them to an orchestra concert. My oldest daughter plays cello, and they remarked what an incredible program it was, and how the arts programs have basically been slashed in Southern California, language, arts, music. And I'm an advocate that we won't allow that kind of thing to happen in our community. And so I will fight, if I become a board member, to ensure that we can keep these programs.
Thank you. Robin Nelson?
Thank you. It has been my absolute honor to serve students, staff, and families at Fargo Public Schools as a board member. I've dedicated my life, both personally, professionally, to help prepare youth for, excuse me, successful future. I am intensely proud of our schools and community, and I hope to work for them for another four years. I was previously elected to three school board terms, and after a two-year break, was re-elected in June 2018. I currently serve as the board's vice president and chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee. Additionally, I serve on the North Dakota School Boards Association Governmental Affairs Committee. I also serve on a handful of other local and national boards, each dedicated to helping children. I want to thank the League for organizing this event, and I look forward to hearing audience questions and learning more from other candidates.
Thank you. Ally?
Hi. Thank you again to the League for hosting this event tonight. My name is Ally Olenberger. I'm a mom, a wife, a military veteran, a lifelong Fargo resident, and a passionate leader. I have a vision for Fargo Public Schools that starts with transparency, includes engagement with all key stakeholders, and pursues a clear strategy that centers on educational outcomes needed for our future generations. Along with my leadership skills, I feel that I make the right candidate, as I'm eager to answer questions tonight, to showcase why I should have your vote in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Devin?
My name is Devin Stachinsky. I'd like to thank you for having us tonight. I'm just a working dad from North Fargo. My daughter goes to Roosevelt. And what I'm concerned about most is her success. I want her to have the best possible education and the best chance to succeed. And some of the actions and inactions of the current iteration of the school board have left me very concerned as a parent, and that's why I'm running. Because there are a lot of situations that require action and not inaction. And, yep, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Lynn?
Thank you for this opportunity, and special thanks to the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley for providing this forum for the candidates and the voters. My name is Lynn Telford, and I am a mom to two Fargo Public School elementary students. I'm the daughter, niece, sister, and friend of teachers. I'm a registered nurse, and I'm a community volunteer. I've been actively involved in my children's PTA for five years, and I currently serve as the vice president. One of my favorite things about my involvement with the PTA has been developing relationships with the staff and the parents, and hearing about their experiences. I've gained insight and understanding that I would have never had without that participation. My decision to run for the school board is founded by a similar desire to further understand the connection between the administration, the school board, the staff, and our students. It is easy to sit from the sidelines and have opinions, but I recognize how complex the decisions are. There are a lot of factors to balance, and I want to make sure that our students and our teachers are the number one priority of the board and the administration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So our first question this evening, we'll start with Namal. So the question is related to teacher shortage. So a shortage of school teachers is a national concern, one that also affects Fargo, both in concerns of, of course, attracting new teachers, but also retaining qualified teachers during a time of low morale. So the question is, how would you propose the district retain current Fargo teachers and recruit new qualified teachers?
Thank you so much for that question. I truly appreciate it. As I mentioned earlier, there are one hundred and forty-one teachers and staff has resigned. And this is so crucial to me, and it's really break my heart to see our teacher leaving. I believe that there are so many options and so many things that we can do in our community to make sure that our teacher shortage shouldn't be, they shouldn't be leaving. First, we should be able to look into their contracts to make sure that, to make sure that they are compensated accordingly. Not only on top of that, too, we need to look into grants, too, as well, to make sure that whatever money that we are putting into the school, we want to make sure that they are there for our teacher. And then also, too, we need to be able to support them as a parent, and to make sure that our teacher are welcomed, and they feel they are heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Kelch?
So Fargo Public School is the fourth-largest employer in Fargo. Obviously, nationwide, employers are desperate to hire competent employees, and Fargo Public School is facing the same dilemma. We have to provide a safe environment where teachers feel truly appreciated and are compensated accordingly. We have wonderful, and we also need wonderful, staff to support those teachers. We need to provide them with the best tools available, but what we really need to do is ask the teachers what they need, really hear them and listen, and then ensuring that they are respected in the classroom, they have safety in the classroom, and they have some appreciation. But, I mean, the bottom line is, we need to find creative ways to compensate our teachers. And I realize, as a board member, my hands are tied. However, I would seek out creative ways, either through the legislature or public funding, to get more money from the state.
All right. Thank you. Robin?
You know, most importantly, we need to listen and collaborate with current teachers and district employees, and give everyone the respect they so rightfully deserve. We need to continuously monitor workload and caseloads, and I will continue to advocate for smaller class sizes and ratios. Decora must return to board meetings to instill confidence in the district for potential and existing teachers. I am committed to work at the state legislative level to improve public school funding, protect retirement plans, and defend off attacks on educators' professional judgment.
All right. Thank you. Ally?
As I attended teacher negotiations this summer, one of the key themes that came out of that was the overall lack of support that our teachers felt. They didn't feel heard, they didn't feel listened to, and they didn't feel valued. That value comes down to two things. Number one is pay, and number two is that workplace culture. We need to be understanding and listening and engaging with our teachers to understand what they need. Our teachers shouldn't have to put together Amazon wish lists to get necessary supplies for their classrooms when we're funneling an exorbitant amount of tax dollars to them. We need to listen to them, we need to support them, and we need to frankly advocate for them.
Thank you. Devin?
This is a problem that's plaguing not only the Fargo Public School, but every business in every area. Like where I work, there's 55 open positions. So burnout is absolutely in the forefront of my mind when any time I think about any person working any job. My place of business, they increase the pay, and they still can't get people to stay, because the comfort level isn't there. The environment is not supportive and outright dismissive. And I see a lot of that in the current iteration of the board with a lot of the inactions taken. So money isn't going to solve this problem, but we're going to have to lean heavily on the community as a whole, especially parents, to solve it.
All right. Thank you. Lynn?
One of my visions for Fargo Public Schools is that we have a district that is the employer of choice for educators in our region. I work in healthcare, and we're facing the same staffing shortage crisis, and we have to be creative. One of the strategies we use in healthcare is retaining the talent that we have, and we do that by listening to their voice. So what do they need? We know that teachers are asking to do other duties as assigned they haven't previously done, covering recess, covering other classes, managing behaviors that they don't necessarily have the training, resources, or support to manage, making sure that their voice is heard and respected and utilized in decision-making, and making sure that there's civility within their workplace. So I agree with what Ally said, the workplace culture is really important, and how do we measure that in Fargo Public Schools? And are the teachers... And are the teachers able to, are they able to honestly tell the leaders what the culture is? And I don't think they can currently do that. They have to provide their name when they fill out culture of safety surveys. And I think that takes away that anonymity for them to feel safe to speak up.
Thank you. And finally, Katie Christensen?
Thank you. This is a question that I would say really breaks my heart as a former teacher, that we're seeing teachers want to leave the profession and that teachers are not envisioning themselves retiring from this profession. And so I think the thing we need to keep in mind is, how do we make the profession appealing again? How do we meet the student needs to kind of calm down some of the behavior problems that teachers are facing? We need to advocate for more public funding to make sure that we can give competitive pay. And I think what we really need to focus on too is really protecting our teachers' time, ensuring that their subrequests are fulfilled, and eliminating any tasks that are unrelated to student achievement. In terms of attracting and recruiting new teachers, we have three colleges in the area, and most of those colleges have students who are studying to be teachers. So can we connect with them and maybe find ways that they can be involved in our schools, like being a substitute teacher or being active in the schools? And then hopefully, once they get in there, they can see how amazing the Fargo Public Schools are and try to retain them and keep that talent here in the area.
All right. Thank you. So for our next question, we'll start with Katie Kelch. It's related to parent input and engagement. So if elected, how would you ensure that parent input is heard and reflected in the decision-making process of the board?
I think parents have become a little bit more removed from their children, not in this last cycle, but on the whole. I think parents do need to take some accountability in researching their children's education more. How would I advocate? You know, opening up opportunities for children to volunteer. We have public forums for the school board and really maybe doing Survey Monkey kind of things to get their input in situations. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Robin?
You know, parent input is and involvement is probably one of the strongest indicators for. So how do we do that? You know, I respond to almost every email. And I ever learned that I am one of the few school board members that does. I consistently help guide parents to communicate in an effective way. But you cannot force parents to be involved, to your point, Katie. You know, and, but sometimes I think some of the students that need the most help, their parents are involved. So I work really hard for students that don't have involved parents because, you know what, our kids deserve it. So we need to be voices for those kids whose parents aren't involved. But I have always welcomed and responded to parents that have contacted me and have reached out to them actively. And I will continue, excuse me, continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ally?
Yes, and I will also echo Robin's comments is that she is one of those school board members that does respond to parents' questions. And I am very grateful as a parent that has received many responses from Robin, so thank you for that. As far as parent input goes, you have three key stakeholders in children's education. You have the teachers, you have the parents, and you have the taxpayers. If that parent's voice is not being heard and all perspectives are not being taken into consideration, then we're getting an imbalance of decision-making. One of the things that I have noticed as receiving surveys from Fargo Public Schools is that they're very much, here's what we're doing, what do you think? Otherwise, we don't want to really listen to your ideas. There is not an open feedback mechanism where parents are able to engage with leadership. I would instill leadership groups, listening groups, and also have a stronger social media presence. We need to be meeting our parents where they want to communicate. And we also need to be communicating in languages that are their first language so that we're ensuring those accurate representations.
Thank you. Devin?
House Concurrent Resolution 3049 says that parents are now the primary stakeholders of students now. This was signed in, in Besmark. And one of the stances that I've seen from the current board is parents not feeling like they're being listened to. One solution to this would be something kind of like a grand PTA, where there would be an advisory board to the school board that would have a parent or teacher or several of each from each school getting together and go, okay, what are the situations that we're seeing in the classroom? What are the results we're seeing? And then actually have them report to the school board and say, here's what we've found. What kind of solutions can we work collaboratively on to actually resolve the issues?
Thank you. Lynn?
As Robin mentioned, parent engagement is a key indicator in student success. So it's really important that we make sure that parents know how important their engagement is. I'm in the PTA, and I see the challenge that it is to get parents involved. Also appreciate that we have parents that, you know, two parents or one parent working one or multiple jobs, multiple kids in multiple schools and activities. And it does get to be a challenge to be everywhere and wear all of those hats. So how can we come up with creative ways to meet parents where they're at? How do we hear from the community and not in a selective way, but to the points of some of the fellow candidates? Focus groups where anyone and everyone can join and participate and have a seat with the board for the board to really hear what the general group thinks and not maybe select groups that are placed in these task force, et cetera. And then I think holding board members accountable to their responsibilities as school liaisons and make sure that they're fulfilling that really, that expectation. Because that's a really great opportunity for them to develop relationships with parents.
Thank you. Katie Christensen?
Thank you. I was going to echo what Robin and Lynn have now said about parental involvement really being a key to student success. So we do, we want our parents involved, and we want our parents to have communication with the school board. I know that the school board has a standing committee called Communications Engagement and Advocacy, and that seems like a really great outlet where maybe some of these listening sessions or feedback loops could be taking place to allow more of a conversational setting that allows for back and forth communication about what's going on. And then I also would support the use of these liaisons to the schools to make sure that our board members are showing up as the liaison and being there present in those situations. I also want to point out that I think that transparency is really important here. That when it comes, I think there is a difference between listening to and agreeing with. And, you know, we've talked about how all these different emails come in. There's no way that a school board member could agree with every single person who sends in an email because they're all going to have slightly different opinions. And so I think when, when it does come down to the decision-making, having transparency in why that decision was made.
Thank you. Namal?
Yeah, I'm the last one. Thank you so much. I totally agree with everyone that said that parent should be involvement. There are a lot of things that we should be look into as a, as a parent. I myself am a parent who worked so hard to make sure that my daughter being heard on everything that she's doing. Sometime I do have question, and sometime I barely even get email back from the teacher. So it's really frustrating at the same time. Then not only on top of that, there is, keep in mind, we need to put into other, other issues that are involving in our community, especially new American communities. Yes, we have that percentage there. And if we cannot get to them on time, just like we are saying it here, how are they going to know that their teacher need to be, need to be able to talk to their parent? We can't. So we want to be able to make sure that the teacher need to be able to send out an email with different languages in there so it's easy for all of them to understand exactly what's going on in school. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So our next question will begin with Robin. We had a number of questions concerning public health measures during the pandemic, especially mask mandates. What is your stance on the school district following public health mandates?
So I get to start on the most difficult question. You know, I am the board liaison to Fargo-Cass Public Health Board. We did the best that we could with the information we had at the time. You know, I want people to know, one of the reasons I voted against the motion to follow Fargo-Cass Public Health advice last August is because I felt the public wanted the board to make decisions regarding mitigation strategies like masking, not push it off to another committee or body. And I want to reiterate that my vote was not against masking or any other related strategy, but because I felt we needed to own the decision. I also raised the issue the previous May by calling a special meeting, but I was unable to convince the majority of the board to change course to take accountability for the decisions for our COVID mitigation strategies. I, I am not against any of the strategies that were suggested, but the board needs to own the decision.
All right. Thank you. Ally?
So ultimately, when I think about it, if I put myself in the position of Robin and fellow board members that had to make those decisions, my guiding principle is always going to be the servants of the children's education. And when we put mandates in place, we put ultimatums in place that takes away the autonomy for the teachers and the learning environment that needs to be created for all students to succeed. And not that, again, that we're against the masking or any of those pieces, but when you make them a mandate, it becomes about the mandate and not about the educational outcomes of our children. As a school board, that is what we need to be accountable for. Your medical decisions should not be made or mandated by anybody else between you and your doctors where those things need to come into place. Public health has a very important piece in our community. They make recommendations. The school board could have advocated for those mitigation strategies instead of mandated them.
Thank you. Devin?
Mandate is a, is a word that a lot of people immediately are averse to. Most people, they, when are told to do something, they usually err on doing the opposite. Because they're like, oh, the government is forcing me or my children to do something. I don't want to do that. Show me the information, and I'll make the decision what's best for my family. The real problem is yet to come. With some of our youngest students, their formative years where they're having a mask on their face, they're going to struggle with a lot of the social cues. And 10 years down the line, we're going to have a bunch of kids who don't know how to socially interact because they were stunted in their formative years due to the masking mandates. So we all need to be on the lookout for what's to come.
Okay. Thank you. Lynn?
So I sit on the Board of Health with Robin, and I also worked closely with the infection prevention team at Stanford Health from the beginning of the pandemic. And I think my answer is pretty simple. I choose to trust and believe in public health science. Masking and other mitigation strategies allowed our students to return safely to in-person learning, which we know was crucial for student success and safety. And respectfully, I think that having continued with virtual learning would have actually been much more detrimental to our students than having masks on their face. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Christensen?
Yeah, thank you. I think when we're in the midst of a public health crisis, we follow the guidance of the public health experts. And so I would agree with, if I were on the board, I would, I would certainly follow whatever the, the guidance is put forth by Cass County Public Health. I'm not an epidemiologist, I'm not a public health expert, and I would turn to them for that guidance.
Thank you. Namal?
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. First and foremost, I believe that it is public health job to be able to delegate if the school going to have masks or not. This is their, their safe zone. It has nothing to do with the person that, who's educated as public health as I am. But I do believe that any mandate should be coming from our cities and, and the public health to make sure that we follow the law for the public health and experts accordingly. And that's how it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Kelch?
I would agree with Lynn and Katie and, I'm sorry, Namal. Namal. I would have voted the same way the board did. I don't pretend to be an epidemiologist, so I would rely on people that are smarter, that have more information than I do. I do, you know, think remote schooling was detrimental and rather put our kids in school with protective measures. We had a lot of, we didn't have a lot of information at the beginning of the pandemic, and they made the hard decision to mask up. And, you know, without having years behind us to figure out what was going on with this. So I agree with what they did, and it was a tough decision, and I'm proud that they stood up for our kids.
All right. Thank you. So our next question, we'll begin with Ally. So we had a number of questions related to DEI or diversity, equity, and inclusion. So, okay, I should have just read how Katie had it. Our previous moderator hadn't written it. It was so much better than what I tried to, tried to riff on there. So a number of questions were submitted online asking about diversity, equity, and inclusion, also known as DEI, especially related to LGBTQ plus students. Are there DEI initiatives, if any, that you would support in Fargo Public Schools?
Yeah, absolutely. So I feel like every student needs to be able to succeed, whether that means that they are gay, straight, what have you, right? I mean, they need to be able to be themselves. They need to be able to come to a safe environment to understand learning. That's what they're there to do. As far as, you know, specific initiatives, I'm not aware of any that are currently ongoing. But my stance on those would be to support a safe learning environment for all students, where all students are able to, to be themselves.
Okay. Thank you. Devin?
The identity politics angle that is being played in this question doesn't serve the students in the best light. What we have is a situation where the schools are not utilizing the diversity that is actually needed, and that is diversity of thought, diversity of opinion. It is imperative that we make sure that every student is getting their education as appropriately, reading, writing, et cetera. But anything beyond that is a lot of fluff and filler that doesn't serve them later on in life. So I think what the board should do is take a real hard look at where you want to focus your energy, especially with the falling metrics over the last five years.
Thank you. Lynn?
Providing a safe environment for our students, for all of our students, like Ally said, is essential. I had, there was a constituent that messaged me last week with a statistic that 60, something around 67% of LGBTQ plus students in North Dakota don't have a safe adult to go to. That's a tragedy in my mind. So what do we need to do in our schools to make sure that students feel safe talking to some adult in their school, whether it's their teacher or someone? They can't succeed, which is what we want for all of our students, if they're having, if they don't have the emotional support that they need with whatever is going on. So I just think that inclusion, to include gender, gender identity and sexual orientation needs to be a priority for Fargo Public Schools to make sure those students are safe.
Thank you. Katie Christensen?
Thank you. In terms of DEI initiatives, I know that the Fargo Public School District has a director of DEI, and that is definitely a first place to start, is to make sure that there's somebody who is employed with this as their task to address. I also want to speak more specifically about our LGBTQ youth. There's really no doubt that these are some of the most vulnerable students that walk our hallways. You can actually check out the North Dakota LGBTQ plus school climate report that's put out by the Community Uplift Program just to see those numbers, and they're really quite astonishing. We know that our queer youth do better when they feel safe and welcomed, when they are in a safe space where they feel that safety. We have better attendance, which is related to their school achievement. They're more likely to graduate, which impacts our graduation rates. They're less likely to experience depression. They're less likely to have suicidal thoughts or tendencies. So I fully support efforts that aim to protect our LGBTQ youth in school, something like a Gay Straight Alliance, something like a Pride community, efforts to debunk stereotypes about our queer community.
Thank you. Namal?
Thank you so much for that question. So since my last name is DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I guess that would be left to me. First and foremost, I did look at the school, our school system and the way that it was set up. And I did see that, you know, there is a student, student culture. I think first, that need to be defined first. What is the student culture? Because it does not represent anybody at all. We need to be able to look at every student out there from all different backgrounds, of all different walk of life, and see exactly what need do they, what need do they want? And we need to be able to, to represent that. Either going to be LGBT community student, color students, it doesn't matter. What matters that is, we represent them all. Just as I always say, our schools are more diverse now than ever before and will continue to be diverse. The school board should reflect and support. The school board should reflect and support the diversity of a student and work to strengthen the representation within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Kelch?
I'm just going to mirror what most of everybody up here has said. I am an ally of LGBTQ A people. I consider myself a safe space for people to come and talk to me. I do know that people need to be reflected in their teachers and have a safe place to go. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I think, Robin, you still are left to go.
You know, we always need to feel supported wherever we go. I think that's a human need, and I think it's so important for our students to feel that way. I received a call from another nonprofit that asked about how successful we are at the Boys and Girls Club to make people feel involved. And I said, it's not even a question. We just love everybody. And we create an environment where our mentors and the students we serve are accepting, and that comes from the top. And so, you know, I know this is a very politically charged question, but we need to create love at every level and accept differences and celebrate differences and help those students achieve. I don't care where anybody came from. Everybody deserves the same right to succeed in our society, and I will continue to fight for that.
Thank you. All right, so for our next question, we'll begin with Devin. The teaching of critical race theory has become a topic of national discussion. How do you think Fargo Public Schools should address this topic?
Critical race theory, as defined by its founders out of the Frankfurt School, takes the notion of class strife, which was a major thing in Europe, and swapped it for using race in the United States because it politically would get them more traction. It serves no place in the advancement of our students in terms of successful education metrics. History is history, whether you try to obfuscate it one way or another. Events happened, and you need to talk about them either way. But trying to revise history through a lens to serve the purpose of CRT doesn't help the students at all.
Okay, thank you. Lynn?
So from my understanding of critical race theory, there's two definitions. There's the definition from academia, and then there's a definition from the media. I think that its foundation was really for higher education and exactly the word theorizing race and how it has impacted society, whether it comes from Europe or the United States. I think my question is, is this something that's currently in the curriculum in North Dakota or not? And we continue to have this question come up, and yet I think it's a distraction. I think it's a distraction from what we should really be focusing on in Fargo Public Schools, just the topic itself, not the subject, but the topic of critical race theory and whether it should be in our curriculum or not. I think it's a distraction.
Thank you. Katie Christensen?
Thank you. Well, we know that CRT is not in our schools, and it was recently banned by the state legislature, but that really doesn't have an impact on something that was not in our schools in the first place. What I would like to say about critical race theory and these conversations and topics when it comes to race is that ultimately, our curriculum development is a very sophisticated and complex process, and it really comes down to the content experts, and those are our teachers. Our teachers are the ones who are licensed. They have the degrees in these areas. They are ultimately the ones that decide what the content and curriculum should be that our kids receive. I oppose banning any topic because I think that really takes away from the teachers and the content experts in making these decisions. My bigger concern about these constant conversations about CRT is the chilling effect that it has on our teachers and how that impacts their ability to cover historical and current issues related to race and how it impacts their ability to main best practices when it comes to this topic.
Thank you. Namal?
Thank you so much for that question. First and foremost, there is no critical race being taught in our public school, period. Okay? Just looking at this, this is more like political theory, and this shouldn't even be touched based on, because that's not what we're here for. We should be talking about our teacher, how should we be able to support our teacher in generals? How should we be able to achieve, like, how can we be able to put together the achievement gap? How can we be able to support our students in that way? How can we be able to support our teacher in their burnout and the stress and many things like that? How can we be able to bring in more teacher of colors into our school for them to teach? How should we do that? These are the things that we should be talking about, instead of talking about critical race, because this has got nothing to do with critical race at all. This should be for the school board and for our public school. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Kelch?
So from my understanding, it's not for the school board to set policy, so I really don't know where this question is coming from. I am aware that the legislature banned CRT this last legislative cycle. Burgum signed it, and it was never taught in K through 12. So I don't know where we're going with the question. You know, we'll take it into my own hands to teach my children, you know, about critical race theory. I think it's a bit of a slippery slope. Could Hidden Figures be something? If you watch that movie, would that be considered critical race theory? So here we are, and legislature has set, board doesn't set policy, but if you want my opinion, that would be my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Oh, let's go. Nationally fabricated crisis to keep parents educated and engaged, and this is being done by partisan and politically motivated people to discredit public education. We have Administrative Policy 4250. This allows for a thorough process to select, review, and challenge curriculum. All new curriculum and library materials are vetted through a thorough adoption process. All existing curriculum is regularly reviewed. However, there are times when a curriculum is reviewed due to special circumstances. Any curriculum can be challenged by a parent of the student affected. The form is included in Administrative Policy 4250, but I recommend simply having a conversation with teachers and building principals instead of going to social media to create an issue to agitate voters.
Thank you. Ally?
So I will echo Robin's last statement on the overall engagement between the parents and the teachers. I've heard a lot of concerns from parents on the CRT topic. They're concerned about it, and the answer that I feel like is the right one is, are we engaging with our teachers? Do we have that parent-teacher trust relationship? Have we broken down those barriers where those two parties that have a vested interest in that child have the ability to have a discussion? I don't think CRT is in our schools. Again, it's banned in the legislature, so I'm, again, sentiment with everybody else. Like, I don't know why we're talking about that, but I will say that parents are concerned about it. One of the ideas that I would have is that curriculum involvement piece with parents. I know that there is that board that goes through curriculum. Let's engage the other key stakeholders there, which is parents. Make sure that we're leveraging their insights and buy-in as well to vet through the material that we're utilizing in our schools.
Okay, thank you. So for our next question, we'll begin with Lynn. What is your position on directing public tax dollars to private schools or charter schools, either through vouchers or other means?
I think Ally was the one who mentioned that we have a lot of tax dollars going to public schools, and we have teachers that have Amazon wish lists set up. And so I think we already have a crisis with tax dollars not going to public education where it actually needs to go. So if we want to continue to have public education, I think the funds need to continue to fund public education. I have friends and acquaintances whose children go to private schools. I respect their decision. I think that everyone has their own reason for choosing public school versus private school. But as far as public tax dollars, my opinion is that those dollars need to continue to fund public education.
Thank you. Katie Christensen?
I oppose it. I oppose our public tax dollars being diverted to other entities. Our public schools are already stretched for funding, and I think directing these taxpayer dollars to other entities takes away from our schools. That ultimately weakens our schools, and it hinders student opportunity. If you're going to be taking public dollars away from our public schools, at some point in time, something's going to have to give. Is it going to be updated textbooks? Is it going to be musical instruments? Is it going to be extracurricular activities? But when you're pulling from our schools, at some point in time, something's going to have to give, and I would very much oppose any measures or any initiatives that would take funding away from our schools.
Namal?
Thank you. First and foremost, public taxpayer should be for publics. It shouldn't be shared with privates or charter school or anything like that, period. It'd take a lot of things that should be done for the public school children away. For example, if we can create more after-school program, that can really help a lot of these students. We can create others, like cooking class too, because my daughter has been asking for that. I wish they have more after-school program for cooking class. Those things should be done in our public schools and many more. Even swimming lesson too. They should have those available, but currently, they don't because we don't have that many available. So what are we doing about it? We should be able to get those taxpayer money that are public should be able to go to public school, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Kelch?
I am completely against school vouchers. The vouchers dismantle public education by privatizing our schools and put public money into private hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Strongly opposed, you know. However, creatively, our state legislature will hide these with the term of education saving accounts or allowing individuals to divert by choice their tax dollars to go to public schools. We need to keep public taxes for public schools because public schools have to accept every student, and they are held accountable to the public, and private schools are not. And so I will continue to fight for public schools tooth and nail because our kids deserve it. This is nothing against private schools. Those are great choices for parents, but that's a choice, not unlike achieving a public education or a higher education and not wanting the public to pay for it.
Thank you. Ally?
So there's two things that are in our state constitution that are our duties as citizens to provide for, a state hospital and state education. Public education is funded by public tax dollars, and that is plain and simple. I, you know, have heard the concerns as to why people want this voucher system. I strongly oppose it because I've watched what happened in other areas. My mom grew up in New York. She told me how this played out when she was younger. They privatized education, and the socioeconomic divide went massive. You now have the dismantlement of actual public education, and the gaps, it becomes who can pay for it and who can't. And that is not what North Dakota is about. We are here to give education to every single student, and I will absolutely support that.
Thank you. Devin?
I do like money questions. So there's a lot of talk about funding and where it's going. I could see an immediate place where we could recover $111,000 annually and put it back in the classrooms, and that would be eliminating the stipend for board members. That's $1,000 a month per board member. That would go a long way in the classrooms. And a question I would have to every other candidate is, if your student isn't using the public school system, why would you still feel entitled to their money? Yes, the law says that public education has to be provided, but why would you take someone's money if they're not going to get the benefit of using it?
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for that question. So Katie Christensen, this question will start with you. Do you support no-cost breakfast and lunch for all students enrolled in North Dakota public schools? Is how this one is written.
Yes, I would support free access to the meals. Obviously, there would be some discussion about how that's going to be funded, but we do know that access to nutrition has a huge impact on student achievement and their ability to learn and be present in the schools. So yes, I would be in support of that.
Namal?
Yes, I would be able to support that if the student, for the free line, of course, if that's what we are discussing. And I know that there is a lot of things that we can do too, especially like USDA, they have grants that actually can play in this role. Because I know, I remember as a mom who really struggled to be able to feed my child because I am in that levels. And just to see that for every children that will come back home saying that I'm hungry, I need to eat, it's sad. And that's not how it should be. Every children should be able to eat or fed at school instead of them starving. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Kelch?
I am in support of free meals as well for our students. From what I understand, some students, this is the only meal of the day that they may get. So I think it's very important to provide these children with some kind of sustenance throughout the day. I also really liked during the pandemic when they were taking home, when students could take home food for X number of days to make sure they had something in their refrigerator. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Of course, who wouldn't want to feed kids? So here's what I will say. Our lunch and breakfast program is a federal program. And meeting poverty levels, the state has, and I work very extensively with our legislature, they are adamant about not funding federal programs. And so when we fought for feeding our kids the last legislative session, those dollars would have come out of our per pupil funding. So we need to be really careful where we ask for those dollars from. Our state, I'm sorry, I'm going to say it, is not a fan of our federal government, and they are not willing to supplement them. So we need to fight for kids in a different manner and remember how our meals are paid for. Let's go for it. Let's fight at the state legislative level with a legacy fund, but I want to caution everybody, if we put more funds towards our students, it's going to come out of our education funding formula.
Thank you. Ally?
Robin said it correctly there, which is, you know, it's really that battle of, I don't think anybody's going to deny children food. So it comes down to the battle of money, and where does it come from? You know, an idea that I would bring to the table would be around leveraging a lot of the nonprofits that we have. We have a lot of nonprofits, you know, some that are North Dakota specific. So how do we leverage those in the community that want to invest in this very important initiative? I'm not sure that everything needs to come out of tax dollars. We can leverage the different partnerships that we have in the community to solve some of these key issues.
Thank you. Devin?
There's no such thing as a free lunch. Can we all agree on that? That being said, I think we're going about this the wrong way. Asking the state and the federal government to solve this problem is not going to solve the problem. If we want to get to a situation where we have a free breakfast and lunch for kids in the school, I think we should be leaning on private individuals. Agriculture is the second largest industry in this state, and if we couldn't find a way to broker a deal with co-ops, grain elevators, what have you, to get the provided resources or bare materials outright, you know, why wouldn't we try that avenue instead of trying to get the government to do it for us?
Thank you. Lynn?
I've greatly appreciated the free lunches over the past two years, and I know that it's helped many, many families during the financial strain of COVID. And free lunch for all is great in theory, and I support it if the funds are there. You know, it's federally funded. If it needs to be shifted to the state and the state won't support it, then what? You know, we don't need it to take away from other state funds. A few years ago, my children and I, at one of our volunteering visits to the Great Plains Food Bank, we packed the bags that go into the backpacks of kids that go home on the weekend. And I remember that had such a profound impact on me because I saw the number of the bags that needed to go home with students. And so if... And so if resuming the payments for my children's lunches will allow for those resources to continue to go into the backpacks of those kids who need it, then, then I support that. Obviously, if there's a way to make it work. My daughter really wants to use her unicorn lunch bag, and I won't let her because she can go to lunch and, she go to school and have lunch for free. But if we can get those, get the food to the kids who need it on weekends and at dinnertime so that school isn't the only time they eat, then I think that's the route we need to go.
Okay. Thank you. And we have time for one last question before closing remarks. So Namal, we'll start with you. Try to pick a fun question this time. So what extracurricular events, such as music, theater, sports, et cetera, do you feel passionately about?
First and foremost, I just want to say thank you. I'm actually athletics myself. I played basketball in high school and a little bit of college, and I ran track and field in middle school and high school too as well. So those are my favorite ones. Sometimes a bit of soccer, but not the fan. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Kelch?
Obviously orchestra. I've got a daughter who plays the cello, and so I'm a fierce proponent and advocate of the music program at Fargo Public Schools.
Thank you. Robin?
You know, we have been committed, and our community has committed, been committed to support the whole child. And that includes not only academic success, but in, involvement in the community and extracurriculars. I, for one, was much more motivated to go to school at Fargo North because of volleyball and keep my grades up so I could participate. So we know that students that are involved in extracurricular activities are more likely to graduate. So, you know, I, I will respectfully decline your question and say which I prefer because all students are individualized and they deserve that choice, and our voters have, have provided that support so our kids can choose to what they do, want to do to enrich their lives and succeed in their futures.
Thank you. Ally?
So me on a personal level, I am a Fargo North Spartan diehard hockey fan. I bleed blue and gold. Grew up with my dad as the, you know, in the goal boxes, turning the lights on every time the Spartans scored. So I spent my youth there. My son now has the opportunity to spend his childhood there. I love that Fargo Public Schools has so many extracurricular activities that truly, truly engage the entire community. I was also very involved in theater and dance in high school, and those are some of the ones that I'm, that I'm passionate about is on a personal level.
Thank you. Devin?
I think that the Fargo Public School system could do with one more extracurricular, and I think it's the FFA. FFA gave me a lot of skills in, as I was growing up. They, they teach you a lot about not just agricultural things, but robotics and advanced computing and genetics. They, they teach, there's a, there's a whole plethora of things that, that I think would serve our students if we were able to get an FFA chapter started in one or all three of the high schools.
All right. Thank you. Lynn?
I grew up in a small town in North Dakota and was able to participate in just about every extracurricular activity that was offered, and so I, I think I liked Robin's answer. I can talk about what I enjoyed, sports, music, theater, drama, speech, but what matters more is that we have something for every student in their interest. So I really like Devin's idea of a chapter of FFA, you know, ally groups, those kinds of things. What other, what can we, what do we need to do to serve our students' interests so that they have the opportunity to participate in whatever interest?
Thank you. Katie Christensen.
Yeah, I would first echo to some of the sentiments that I really hope we can have a variety of co-curricular and extracurricular activities that can meet the needs of all students. One of my kids actually participated in a fishing club, and I had no idea that we had a fishing club until he came home with like a piece of paper. And we don't have a boat, but they still found ways for him to participate. So that was awesome. Personally, for me, I'm a huge fan of our music program, which has even received some, some recent recognition for that and just access to the musical education in our middle schools and high schools. I can tell you right now, if you ever decide to time at a swim meet, you have the best seat in the house. And I've probably spent most of my time supporting the theater program, and I, I cannot imagine what my child's high school experience would have been like without that opportunity. So I think the theater program is amazing, and I think it has been such a joy to see how the schools support each other. So when North has a program, there's this huge chunk of South kids that come, and those, the theater is so full of energy on those days.
All right. Thank you. So that was our last question for the evening. We'll do the kind of concluding statements here in just a moment. For, we do want to thank all the, the candidates for participating. We want to thank everyone in the audience and the citizens of Fargo that submitted questions. If you'd like to continue to learn more about the candidates, please visit vote411.org. That will be published on Thursday, May 5th, which is also the same day that absentee voting begins. Also, on a note, North Dakota citizens, I brought with me absentee ballot applications. If anyone is interested, I'll stick those over there in the corner so you can feel free to grab one before you leave if you would like to vote absentee in either the, there is a spot to select the primary election and/or the November election. So you can do one or both, or one or the other. So I'll set those over there. And then also, the actual, if you, if you are a like-to-vote-on-the-day kind of person, June 14th is the day for our primary election here in Fargo, which is the day that all of our local races, including school board, will be decided. Also on the ballot then will be the city commission. Our form for that will be tomorrow evening. It's going to follow a very similar setup. Again, because we had such a wide field of candidates, we have to do two separate sections. So first begins at 5:45 tomorrow, right back here in the chambers. And then our form for the Fargo Mayor and Park Board will be May 4th at 6:00 PM. So with that, we will, our last question is actually also kind of a little bit of a prompt from one of the voters, which is, in a deep field of candidates running for school board, why should Fargoans give their, give you their votes? And so I think this one, Katie Christensen will start, or sorry, Katie Kelch will start us off.
So we have absolutely wonderful candidates running this year. I am so pleased with everybody on the panel and their answers. And thank you for running. This is not an easy thing to do. Obviously, I have a lot to learn. I realize that, but I'm certainly up for the challenge. I have stake in the game being a shareholder. I have two children in Fargo Public School, but I also have the time to dedicate myself to the demands of the opportunity. I have good critical thinking skills. I'm a problem solver, hardworking, but first and foremost, I'm an advocate for our children, the teachers, and the shareholders in the community.
Thank you. Robin?
Thank you. You know, as I've said before, I've dedicated my life, both personally and professionally, to help prepare youth for a successful future. As a school board member, I've worked tirelessly to ensure well-rounded opportunities for all students, continuously collaborated with educators, and fought to limit class sizes to achieve better outcomes for all. I consider all employees of the district to be educators, and each deserves the respect and trust as the professionals they are. In my professional life, I have served thousands of children and families as one of the leaders of the Boys and Girls Clubs. The discussions and decisions that will occur during the upcoming North Dakota legislative session will be pivotal for public education and the success of the district, and I am the only candidate that has the experience to successfully, excuse me, navigate it. Thank you again to the League, and I hope to continue working for students, and I humbly ask for your support.
Thank you. Ally?
I am bringing my leadership skills to the school board, where I can advocate for our teachers, be responsible with our taxpayers' investments, instill creativity and problem-solving in the restoration of quality public education at Fargo Public Schools. I'm ready to get to work for our kids, and I hope to have your vote and your support in the upcoming election in June.
Thank you. Devin?
I mean, what do we really want as parents? We want our kids to be successful. We want fiscal responsibility with our tax dollars, and we want transparency between the parents and teachers and the school as a whole. These are all fairly achievable goals if we're willing to actually sit down and negotiate and get input from all parties involved. So that's what we need. We need someone who's willing to actually negotiate, reach across the aisle, and not just go, well, this is my motion and we're going to do it this way. Well, did you ask any of the other stakeholders, or did you decide to do that yourself? So the question is, what do we want? We want someone who's actually willing to listen to all involved parties, and I fully intend to do that.
Thank you. Lynn?
My desire to serve on the school board and my vision if I'm elected is simple. I want to ensure that the focus stays on our students and teachers. How do we create a district, like I mentioned before, that is the employer of choice for educators in our region so that there's a waiting list to get a job at Fargo Public Schools like there maybe was 10 years ago, and that offers the best possible learning environment for all of our students? If elected, I will hold the administration and fellow board members accountable, and I expect that from anyone else who's elected, but it is important to me that that is done with respect and collaboration. Loud voices might get attention, but they can interfere with progress. So I commit to being reasonable and civil in, in my support and advocacy for our teachers and students.
Thank you. Katie Christensen.
Yeah, I want to thanks, say thanks again to the League of Women Voters and all of you who are here today, either as a participant or as an attendee. When voting time comes around this summer, whether you vote by mail or in person, I ask that you would please consider voting for me, Katie Christensen. When you go to vote, you'll see that we have five open seats on the Fargo Board of Education. That's over half the seats. So this election could have a huge impact on the makeup of the board, and if elected, I promise that I will keep student achievement and well-being at the center of all my decision-making.
Thank you. Namal?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you for coming. Our children, our teachers, our staff are facing a crisis in Fargo. We deserve a school board member that will take action in this critical time. I will expand our after-school program and expand BAR, which is a, is a, is a pilot program that is in Fargo sauce, to make sure that all our students have a chance to succeed. I will make sure that the district actually listen to you, the family of Fargo, as we work our way through this time and the future challenge. I will support our staff and teacher by being their allies in creating a better contracts, better pay, better conditions, mental health services for our, for our staffs, teachers, and students as they get through the aftermath of the past few years. Our, our students deserve a fighting chance, and I'm asking for your vote. My name is Namal Day, and it is time for a brand-new day. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And thank you to all of our candidates for your time tonight. We really appreciate it.